Good morning. We'll call the June 18th County Commission meeting to order. And we'll stand for a moment of silent reflection, the pledge of allegiance led by Representative Mike Virtue. And we'll proceed from there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Next item on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone wish to make any changes in the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented. Oh, you got something?
Sorry, I'd like to request to remove item number seventeen. Ms. Atkins has informed us she had a conflict of interest today.
So, Mr. Chair?
We come second, huh?
I'll reface that. I move to approve the agenda with the withdrawal of item number seventeen.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with seventeen removed. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly Hennessy.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and rotate items quickly. The consent agenda is act upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today, I've placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of June 16th, 2013. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $2,256,575.99. To acknowledge the Order of Organization and Incorporation for the Formation of the Dreamscape Road District as presented by the auditor. To acknowledge the Order of Organization and Incorporation for the Formation of the Deer Creek Lane Number Two Road District as presented by the auditor. Approval of participation in the SDRS Roth 457 for Pennington County as submitted by the auditor. To approve the adopt a highway application for approximately 1.3 miles of Diaz Avenue by WL Plastics as submitted by the Highway Department. To recognize the volunteers from the month of May 2013 as submitted by Human Resources. Approval of the joint, or excuse me, approval of the South Dakota DOT Railroad Joint Powers Agreement for Weed Spraying Services as submitted by Weed and Pest Department. And finally, approval of the request to withdraw the application for right-of-way for an isolated tract to a public highway as submitted by Mr. David F. Morrow.
Does anyone wish any of the items from the consent agenda removed?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by the office manager.
There's a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor, the motions say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is items from the public. And we have lots of folks here. What we've done is pass around a speaker request form asking those people who wish to speak to sign up to do so. In our previous meeting, we followed a similar procedure. And I would just ask at the beginning for the Commission to identify by motion how much time they wish to allot to public, items from the public. And in order to proceed through this, we would ask each speaker to come forward, adjust the microphones so you can be heard, state your name, and then make your remarks. If someone ahead of you says something that you were going to say anyway, in order to avoid too much time duplicating, just please be mindful of that as you address the group. So, at this point, I would also ask if anyone who is here to address anything other than the ag issue, ag acres issue, would you raise your hand, please?
That's why I didn't give them public.
Now, are you gonna tell everybody that raises her hand to put her down?
Can you imagine that, sir? Just waved her hand and everybody just melded.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we go any further than this, if you suppose, I could have a moment of personal privilege since I have a captive audience here. And I promise I won't embarrass them, or you.
I will grant that.
Okay. Since I've got a captive audience here and the news people are here, some of us have been working on a situation in a cemetery up in Lead called the Lead West Cemetery. It's directly across the street from the high school. There's a Congressional Medal of Honor recipient in that cemetery that's never been honored. He died in 1928, and he received his Congressional Medal of Honor during the Indian War with the Little Big Horn. He was saved out of the Custer's Command and left behind because of a lame horse. So, the next time you guys get a lame horse, don't badmouth it. Might save your backside. But anyway, he lived through that, wound up in Reno's Command, and got his Congressional Medal of Honor there. But we're going to dedicate his gravesite this coming Saturday at 11 o'clock in that cemetery, if anybody's interested. There's supposed to be about 300 people coming already. But we're gonna rededicate, we'll put up a flag and solar lights, and then a flagpole on his grave. So, that's, thank you for the presence.
Thank you. Okay. Motion from the Commission relative to the time allowed. So far? Half an hour?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to limit the items from the public to a half hour.
There's a second? Motion and a second to limit the items from the public to a half an hour. And the last time, the Commission left it to the discretion of the Chair in terms of how long each speaker could speak. So, we have four people signed up. Shelley Parker is first. If you would come forward, please.
My name is Shelley Parker. State laws should encourage, not eliminate, people from investing and owning land. Sorry. Owners of undeveloped land are lucky if they can generate enough income to pay expenses for weed control, fencing, and limited taxation. Our family has worked and lived on this land for generations. Starting with my grandparents, Dell and Unaham. My parents, Leo and Audrey Hamm. My sisters, Penny Slavik, Kelly, Jim, her husband, Wise Graham, and myself, Shelley Parker. We, as a family, hope to pass our land down to future generations. This is Penny's grandson, Breiler. This is what we're trying to do. Many who now own land under 160 acres and land which has been in families for generations will now lose it to overtaxation if the county's actions stand. It is the responsibility of the County Equalization Office to approve those who meet the requirements to receive ag land. Please reconsider your decision so many of us won't be forced to sell our properties due to overtaxation and allow citizens the ability to own their own land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carol Olson.
I'm Carol Olson. I am a homeowner in Pennington County. I'm also a landowner in Pennington County. They're separate, totally separate from a taxation standpoint. I pay over $8,000 a year in my home. My son, who lives on our land, pays over $5,000 a year for his home. Aside from that, the rest of the land used for ag purposes is taxed according to ag status. Now, do we make a profit? The reality is, as she said, no. But let me tell you what we do do. Because we have ag status, we have gotten smart. We do not have land that would allow us to raise a large herd and sell it at market. But I have a small herd, and I use science and technology to do embryo transfers, semen collection, and I am able to sell that and produce far more than I would if I were running cattle per head for what that acreage would support. Now, what I'm asking this group to do is to stop following the pattern of the spend and tax mentality that government, as we have come to know it, in Washington does. And not clone yourself in that realm, but instead, be smart. Think about how the rest of us in business do more with less. And if the county would do the same thing, do more with less, using all of the creative, the experience, the smarts of the people who want to be here and do what we do, and realize that we will stop. And when that stops, I no longer support High Plains genetics. I no longer support Rapid Diesel. I no longer support Runnings. I no longer support DNMA. I no longer support, and the list goes on and on, Hobart, their buildings. We would not be doing what we do and spending the kind of money we do if it wasn't about our heritage. My grandparents homesteaded in the twenties here. They lived in Assad Hut, raised seven children down in Fairburn, and managed to eke out a living by doing more with less. They couldn't support, they couldn't make 160 acres work. But their other neighbors who joined in with them and each parceled out 40 acres could. That entire 160 acres became productive. Every family managed to survive and pay their way. And every family went on to produce five more generations of people that are now living in Pennington County, contributing as we do to the county and to the citizens of the county. You take that away from us because the money I do have to spend supporting all those services now would have to go to increased taxes. When I'm already paying, I think you will admit, a pretty good share of my fair, personal share of taxes in property in Pennington County. I'm not gonna get any more services from you as a result of this. But I'm sure as heck not going to contribute to the rest of our community, our region, the way I am able to do when I don't have the money left to do it because of the increased taxes. There's a consequence and a cascade and a ripple to your decisions. When in business, every single day, I have to think, big picture. I have to think what those ultimate consequences are. And to make a decision for the expediency of a line item showing higher revenue, but in reality gets to, don't shake your head at me because it's an absolute fact.
It's not a fact. You can use your opinion to have your own opinion. You cannot make up your own facts.
I can, I'm not making up my facts. I'm not. I can, I can give you receipts to show you. The point is, this group of people should be required, in my opinion, to think like businesspeople. If you want to serve your customers and to stay in business, then you have to think like we have to, to survive, which is, big picture, which is, how do I make something happen that affords me the things that I want, which is eke out a living the way I want to do it, and at the same time, contribute to the greater whole? Anytime you go to a single light item just to increase revenue without the big picture of what it does to the bottom line for the citizenry, you have failed to, in your responsibility, and you have failed in really understanding the big picture. Now, I wrote you a letter because, like any mom, you know, when somebody has grossly offended or erred in something, mom's gonna speak up, right? And mom's gonna lecture. And I'm not, trust me, it's not my purpose to lecture. My purpose is to open eyes. My purpose is to have you understand that this is a much bigger picture than. And I'm sorry that Mr. Buscarud has other interests as he looks off to other people. So, he's not interested in what I have to say. But I will say that I am offended, and I think that in my small way, in my small contribution to this state, this county, that I am only a flea on the butt of the elephant. But the rest of these people in this room who do the same thing, and we do it day in, day out, day in, day out, have a right to be upset with something so onerous as to quadruple a requirement, to change the rules in the middle of the game, to quadruple something which results in us not being able to do as the hams want to do, pass their land, their legacy, their heritage, their lifestyle onto their children. Because it won't happen. You'll get more urban sprawl, you might get more taxes, but with that, you'll have to provide a lot more services for people that aren't contributing the way we are. So, that's what I would like you to consider.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I know the last meeting we had, we didn't allow any of the Commissioners to say anything, but I think that that's not beneficial to the people or this Commission. And I need to respond to this. And we're being accused of being a tax and spend and get more revenue. If anybody would have read the paper and listened to the news media, you would have understood that when we first made that motion, we said that any taxes, some of us said that any taxes that were created for more revenue would be taken into the mix and reduce the mill levy for everybody. That's where we were going. So, this is not a tax and spend situation at all. It's to play even out the playing field amongst everybody. And I know there's a lot of people in here have small acreages and they're doing things with those acreages. But what about the people that are, we have one, it's a 70-acre and paid $10,600 an acre for the land. He built a $750,000 house on that land, and he's paying $180 a year in land taxes. What about that? What do we do with that? That's the question right here. So, that's the question I'm asking. What can we do? I don't know.
Mr. Chair? Let's, we're getting astray here. This is a public comment period.
Well, it is, but we're leaving ourselves hanging out, Mr. Chair.
Well, I failed to state that we would try to avoid personal exchanges in this process. So, we'll start with, or proceed with Representative Virtue.
Well, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I had to be honest on that forum put down that I'm opposed to this, but since the decision is in the works, I'm not here to question your decision on raising that acreage. What I am here to do is, since I read in the paper that you needed, or might request some help from the legislature, is perhaps explain to you what we can do for you, keeping in mind that everything we do down there affects the whole state, not just Pennington County. So, we have to be very careful about the rules we change. But as far as contiguous property, that approach also, although it seems simple to change that, there's a lot of things you have to consider. Where do you draw the line? Is it in a county? Is it the fire protection district? There are landowners in this room that I personally know live, have property in two separate counties. All those things have to be taken into consideration and discussed, and that's gonna be a big topic of discussion down there. But I want to pledge to you that we want to help the landowners and you both solve this, and to the best of our ability, we will involve anybody who wants to be involved in that process to come down and testify in the committees. Go ahead and twist our arms, lobby all you want. I'm just here to offer our assistance, I would hope, because of one of the things I just wanted to touch on that she mentioned, I know we're running out of time, but, you know, whether you're a grain farmer or a rancher, today, you can produce so much more off of each acre, each small piece of property, just because of the technology we have today. So, please keep that in mind, too. You don't have to have a ton of acreage to make money in ag anymore. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you. Brenda Whiting.
Hi, I'm a land and homeowner out in the county, in Pennington County, Brenda Whiting. And I would like to respectfully request from the County Commission that if they could reconsider or ask some of the landowners to be involved, to see if there's any exceptions to these rules. There's a lot of people in this room that own less than 160 acres. They have been on it and been trying to keep the Western way of life in South Dakota going. And it seems that if you're a developer and can afford to buy more than 160 and have someone do something ag-related on it, you're going to still be able to pay ag taxes. And I don't dispute that you have to do some of that until the cities grow to where they need to. I can understand that. But I think it's catching people in a ripple effect, like Carol said, that if we have a neighbor that rents five other parcels of land, and the biggest being 120 acres, what's that going to do if these taxes go up? That all the hayland that he rents and then in turn makes bales to sell to local people that have horses, what is that gonna do? I think there's a lot of other things other than the $750,000 house. I don't dispute there's some of that. But can't we give the Equalization Office some leadway to look at some of these things? I do appreciate your time, and if there was any way that some of us could get together, I'd be the first to volunteer, and I know that there's other people in this audience that would be more than happy to be on that as well. Thank you.
In case someone who arrived later failed to have access to the signup sheet, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? State your name, please.
My name is Don Hubener. Twenty-one years ago, I bought some land out north of Flying Jake. I grew up in town. My intention was for my family to be able to grow up out of town, be around livestock, which I didn't have the chance to because I grew up in town. But I love the livestock. With this law going into effect, you're gonna take that away from a lot of young people. When I bought the land, I didn't have money to do nothing. I scraped everything I could put together. My parents helped me a little bit to buy the land, and searched around for a double wide, and, you know, scrimped and saved, and I did all, everything that you've asked. I run cattle on the hay. I lease land. I have cattle other places now. Yes, I did put a big house on it now. I paid taxes on that. But you're gonna take this away from a lot of young people who want to move out and be able to teach their children something about ag. And I just don't think it's right. You know, for me to, I heard that somebody talked to somebody down in one of the offices here, and they asked her if she intends to sell the land. Oh, yeah, someday she probably will sell this land for commercial usage or whatever. When I bought mine, I bought it with the strict intention of having cattle and so on. Yes, someday I'll sell it. And as close I am to town, it'll probably go commercial. But that was never my intent to buy that land so I could make a bunch of money on it. It was made, the decision was made so that I could teach my children things, you know, and so on. So, you're gonna take that away from a lot of young people by doing this deal. They're not, they might be able to scrape up enough money for, buy 40 acres. 160, you're not gonna get many young people that can do that. So, you know, think about your decision and how it affects the young people and so on, is what I'm asking. So, that's all I have.
Anyone else?
My name's Patty Hinson. We're a small landowner out in the Rockerville area. We don't run cattle, but we have started a vineyard. We have an orchard. We're trying to do some things more along that line, organically. When we find, we don't have a house up there yet. When we finally get moved up there, we would like to sell organic plants and have a greenhouse type thing. So, that's where we're trying to go with our land. Will we ever make a third of our income off of it? No. And I doubt that anyone else in western South Dakota is gonna make a third of their income off of land in this area. It just doesn't happen. My whole issue is this. We bought that amount of acreage under the rules that you had in place. I don't understand why you don't grandfather existing landowners in, and new landowners. Or if, and when we sell our land, then, yes, you buy, you understand, you're not gonna have ag status. You're not grandfathered in. And so, I know you grandfathered things. In Ashland Heights, for example, what a pit that is. They break all kinds of regulations, but they've been out there a long time. Either the county either ignores a lot of their violations, or they grandfathered them in. So, that's my whole issue. It's like having a stop sign somewhere, it wasn't there before, now you're going back and arresting people because they never stop. It's not a good analogy, but never stopped at that stop sign. I just don't understand why you don't make the level, the playing field level in the sense that you tell people, okay, now on, this is what it is. You people who are there existing, we will grandfather you in. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, and again, I think that question has to be answered. We cannot grandfather anything in based on the way the state statutes are written right now. Maybe if it's changed, maybe that could happen. But right now, it can't happen.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman? I just wanted to say that I got a very nice phone call from Norma Henderson and a very nice email, and just wanted to acknowledge that fact. So, let her know we will be, I will be considering that.
And Norma is here? He's talking about you, Norma.
Mr. Chair, I would say the same thing about, she called me and she promised she would not throw rocks or rotten apples.
We have a gentleman back here that raised his hand. Come up and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Shannon Tibbetts. And just a quick comment. In Pennington County, I do own 80 acres, and I am a certified producer. We run cattle and we do grain farming. But the problem with what you're doing here is, in Pennington County, I lease five other parcels of land. The biggest one's 120 acres, the smallest one's 40 acres. If you raise the taxes on these people that have lived there for a long time, I've lived at my location for 35 years and raised my family there. If you raise the taxes on these people, then that... If you raise the taxes on these people, then that turns around, and I can't afford to lease the land from them to keep my operation going. So, you know, it's, it's very important to me, all these pieces work in to the big picture in what I do. So I just ask the county to reconsider their decision, and thank you for your time.
I'm Norma Henderson, and I come here today to respectfully ask this commission for a motion to reconsider, in order that there may be time and thought put into this, time for people to adjust their operation, appeal their causes in a calm and peaceful way, and I think it can be done.
Is there anyone else?
My name is Leslie Rutter. My parents, my dad's suite is here, bought 400 acres in 1968 in the hills. There's very little grassland on it. They've sold off most of it over the years, not for a huge profit, little bits and pieces here, and I think there's 123 acres left. I have three elder brothers. One of them is in Montana, so he hasn't done anything, but my other two brothers and I each were given the opportunity to buy a little piece of land from my parents, and then they gifted us a little piece of it. And we tried to keep it all together, but, you know, when you build a house, the bank requests that you do certain things, and so we all had to split our land off, and my dad always said, "Don't do that, because then you're going to be paying that non-ag thing." Well, we had to, because that was the only way that the bank would loan us the money to do it. So, you know, I have 15 acres out there. My brothers each have 15 acres out there. We're paying non-ag status on our houses. So my parents are in a position where they have a house, and they have 100 acres, I think it is, and they, they'll never make a third of their income on it. They're on a fixed income. When all this happened, my dad called down there and was told that his taxes were going to go from about $1,000 a year to $10,000 a year. And I just find it ironic that after, what, 45 years of being there, that my brothers and I are in a position where we can afford to keep the land that we own, but my parents, who spent half their lives trying to give us this opportunity, are going to be forced to do something, and what? Who is going to buy land that the taxes are that high on? They're not going to be able to sell it, for what? Because they're going to have, it's going to be like people who aren't going to be able to do anything with it, other than develop it. And, and so now, this land that was bought as a family, as something that could be passed down to children, is going to go to somebody who doesn't care anything about it, and, you know, I just think it's sad that I'm in a position where I have to sit and watch my parents risk losing everything that they worked for. For what? So I, I hope that you will really, seriously reconsider what you're doing here, because it's just not fair.
I'm Rod Alexander, and one of the things that I want to again point out is, is the trouble, and Mike, you might help us on this, and that is, the land that has to be contiguous. Whenever our ranch operation, we have sure enough acres for the 160, but we have a lot of pieces that will be less than that 160. I'm not sure, I think maybe two of them would qualify, and I don't even think the home place would qualify without some effort of trying to find out about the county road that splits property, and, and we aren't being taxed at this time for more with the two parcels we have. That's been a ranch operation before, since 1900, maybe before, and, and the word contiguous, because our total ranch operation, most of our pieces are less than that 160 acres. And it's sure going to cause us grief. We haven't planned on development. It just is absolutely the way it's been since we've had it, since 1968. But I know Rick Lindstrom is here, and Dolores, and they have the same situation, and I bet there's several of the regular ranch operation people that definitely, because of the word contiguous, are not going to qualify for, for the ag status. And I think it should be some consideration, and it may have to be state consideration to make some of that work. And then there's quite a few people that, up in our country, that it's absolutely ag, it's all it has been, probably all it will be, while my generation people have it at least, and they just are still not going to qualify because of maybe 70 acres, and Ted Christman's case, and Rick Wiff up at Rockerville, same thing, under the 160, and that's all his has ever been. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're approaching the half hour that we allocated. Does anyone else have anything?
I'm Nina McBride, and I heard the question asked, "How do we handle this?" Because there are people who build a $750,000 house, and they're on us, ag land. Aren't, isn't the house appraised and based upon the value of the house? Isn't that the way it works? So I would think that that would be doable. You wouldn't have to put everybody in 160-acre arena in order to get your money from these houses. They have to have a building permit, so you know who's building these fancy houses. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to close the comment period, but I do want to thank you folks for your courteous approach to this. It's very commendable. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, since you're at the time limit on comments, is there any way that we could still get our comments to you? Do you still have a request that you consider?
Holly, our office manager keeps a file of that sort of thing, and you-
The best thing that I can suggest is to go to the county's website, and if you go to the tab at the top where it says departments, scroll down, you'll see the commissioners. The commissioner's email address is on our webpage. That's the best route that we have to communicate directly with them. We always accept your comments and writing. You can bring them into the office or snail mail them.
At what point, though, can we assure that you can still read those, and if House comments still attend them? Since you said there was a file.
Well, we each get a copy of everything like that in our file, and then Holly keeps the master file, so, so it's-
Can I be assured to go with you?
I will.
Yeah, I will.
I will.
I do.
Is this a done deal? Have you voted on it, and is it, I mean, be honest with it, is this a done deal? Are we just peeing up with?
Mr. Chair, you want me to answer that, since I'm the guy that's in most of the trouble? It is not, it is a done deal, but that's not saying it can't be changed.
The, the other thing that, that I would speak on is that this has generated interest in state law, and there are a number of folks who have indicated a desire to have some kind of a committee. The committee does not have to be attached to the county commission. One individual can educate a legislator, Mike.
This blonde lady is a lot prettier than you, and she's not going to be able to-
But her husband's back there. Access to the legislative process is available to every citizen, and whether it's by committee or otherwise, a good idea doesn't have, care who has it. So put your thinking caps on, talk to your legislators, talk to your county commissioners, and we'll see how we come up. Okay? Yes?
Two things. One, being a local decision, it really shouldn't have to be taken to the legislature at this point, because you did vote on something, which means you have a say-so on what happens within our county. The other thing, do we not still have the petition process to bring this back, or to have you bring this back up to the publication on the 5th, and there's 20 days after that, I believe? In order to petition, can you bring it back? Is that still law?
I'm not sure.
It doesn't have anything to do with 100, 20 days, I don't believe, with that decision. I think that took place the day it was voted on.
Are there, is within the law, 20 days after publication?
That's, that's when you're writing an ordinance. We didn't write an ordinance.
This wasn't within the ordinance law?
Say again.
It wasn't within the ordinance law?
No, as I understand from the state's attorney's office.
Right, is where we apply the petition?
Ma'am, part of the emphasis on state law is that if you look at what's there, there's three criteria. There's no other area of real estate taxation that has an income increment attached to it. I don't know when that was put into the law, but the law can be changed.
Right, but that's just one of the three criteria.
True. So that's why I encourage you to think constructively, and maybe you change all three of them.
A few points I would probably be good, but right now, it is a local decision, and based on the fact that you took action, it has to be a local decision.
Okay.
Since you are the ones that implemented this to begin with, why can't you not grandfather the existing landowners' law?
Ask that gentleman right there. They write the law, and it says in the state statutes, it has nothing to do with grandfathering. There's no item in there at all whatsoever that says anything about grandfathering, and the county commission can only do what the legislature allows us to do.
Does it say you can't, or it just doesn't say anything about it? It says you can't grandfather it in?
Doesn't say anything about grandfathering. Just has those three criteria.
You can still do it. Can you, or can you not? Can you still make that decision? And you yourself?
Grandfathering, no.
Yeah, it absolutely says you can't.
Most of the grandfathering that, that people refer to applies to zoning.
Can I just speak up a minute? My name's John Anderson, I live in the hill city area on Springfield. Is it not possible for this commission to pass a motion, or one of the commissioners, I understand, Robert's rule of law, parliamentary procedure, whatever it is, someone to make a motion that voted in favor of this, to reopen this whole can of worms up again, rather than continue on having passed what you already passed? Someone can make a motion, who voted in favor, I think, according to parliamentary procedure, can make a motion to reopen this for consideration. So all these people that have spoke and talked, and a lot of them that haven't, and I can bring up my points and my issues and whatever, and everybody's going to have a different point. All it takes, at my understanding, according to parliamentary procedure, is for one of the commissioners who voted in favor of this, it's not an ordinance, and it's a law, I don't know if it's a law or an ordinance or what it is, someone to make the motion to reopen this up for consideration. As long as you don't do that, we move forward, and everybody here is stuck with it. And you can talk about Mr. Virchill, the legislature, and all that. It just takes someone that voted in favor of this to make a motion to reopen this for consideration. That's my understanding of parliamentary procedure.
And that's my understanding also, but until that happens, we're where we are.
And I would respectfully ask one of you to make that motion. There are enough people in here, there are your constituents and your taxpayers, to make it worthy of someone making the motion to reopen this for reconsideration.
At this point in time-
Mr. Chair, don't let me bother you. Mike Virchill wants to speak when you're done. Sorry about that.
Well, I just wanted to be clear, most of what we vote on has to be on the agenda, and so in terms of what's being suggested, would have to occur next meeting, or in time to have it on the agenda for, for the next meeting. So it will definitely be in our minds. And Mike, did you, we're gonna-
Thanks for the opportunity to speak again. I know the time is up, but I just wanted to remind you that anything we do legislatively this coming session is a long ways away from becoming law, unless we do an emergency clause. If we do an emergency, it takes a two-thirds vote, and I'm not so sure this would pass on a two-thirds vote instead of a simple majority. So you're looking at a protracted, if you're looking for help from us, you're looking at a very protracted time period there. And the second thing I wanted to mention was, and we do this all the time, and maybe you don't do it and don't want to do it, but if you could get some subcommittees put together, and maybe each one of you could have one, and you could have a ag producer, you could have just a regular landowner, a tourism representative, each on one, and you can all get your heads together and meet separately and put everything together, you might be surprised at the solutions you come up with.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks, again. We're going to move on now to item 15.
Mr. Chair, just one second, if you don't mind. I'd like to get a feel for the amount of, folks, before you leave, hold it a minute, just, I'd like to have just a show of hands in the crowd, that how many people have 20 acres that they live on, that are here? I'm just trying to get a feel for how, where the graduation might be, if this thing ever gets changed.
20 plus, 20 minus?
Well, I'm going, I'm going to 40, the next time, so how many on 40 acres? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about 15.
I guess, I want mine in there, too, when I, oh, Rich, because it's all in the back.
Is there 80 in there somewhere? How many? One, two, three, four? I was trying to-
I can respectfully make an observation. To me, when you start 40, 50, 60, you're talking dividing. You're dividing the-
Ma'am, I guess, ma'am, what I'm trying to do, and I don't want to get clear out on the limb with this stuff, but, and you're not going to like what I have to say about it, but there are 90,000 residents in this state, or in this county, that are paying taxes on homes, businesses, and things that have absolutely no income generated, or added to it by the state legislature at all. Ag is the only, only business that has a number attached to it, as far as earnings. So there's, there's 90,000 residents out there, and I've had probably close to, I'd say, 200 calls from people that have businesses and homes and things that said, "Hey, right on." Well, maybe it's not quite right on, but it's getting close. So I'm more than willing, willing to work with the state legislature to try to change this, and that's where I'm headed with it right now.
This is hills land. This is rocks and trees. This isn't prime real estate. My dad has 100 acres, 14 acres of it that will provide producing anything. With the drought that we've had, he hasn't even done that.
Okay.
There's no way it's going to be a third of his income. He's 80 years old, you're going to force him out of his home.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
But you've affected how many other people by all this change? There's more than that that's been affected. And if you're looking at a proportion, a pro率an portion, then you take 90,000 people, but then you have to take out all the cities, because you can't have ag in the cities, and then you take out the next level to actually get down to the property owners. And the other part of the hills is that ever since they started cattle ranching, however many years ago, many moons, because we've all got relatives that started way back, they were all small, small portions, because you had mining claims, and you had everything else, and it's split it up if you're the small portions. And it can't be contiguous, because you've got a hill of rocks back there, in order, that separates it.
So, this is not your typical, that you go out east and everything's in quarter sections. This is unique, but you're affecting at least a third of your county, and yet you don't want to listen to constituents.
We are listening, ma'am, and we will, this is kind of turning into a debate, and I think we've shared the knowledge, we will go on with our agenda. Thank you very much for coming, and we'll do the best we can.
So, will this be on the agenda as a thing to vote on, or?
We'll find out.
At the next meeting?
We'll find out.
Do I put that on the agenda or are we done?
It may not be the next meeting, but it could be, it could be on the agenda, and we've got time between now and the time the assessment.
That lady and I, we just weren't ready to go at it, it was real close, it was getting right down to the, all right, come on, let's go outside.
Do you put these items on the agenda, or can publicly present items? How does this thing affect the law?
Contact Holly and talk to her about that. Sometimes a public request doesn't need to be on.
I understand, okay. And thank you, Mike.
So, if you were here...
Thank you, sir, for your honesty, so that, I think it is, I appreciate you. I, I, unlike that one day, I did not feel like I was serving you, so, thanks.
Blonde haired woman, tell me how stupid I am. Yeah, well, I figured that when she pays $8,000 on a house, it's a half million dollars.
Dan?
I couldn't quite tell, I'm sorry. Hello?
Wait till, wait till the hubbub clears down.
And you were a wall last evening.
I was, I was a mixed one.
You're supposed to have permission for us.
Well, as you guys have the experience, if it was to make everybody's exciting meetings, I think I might have really missed you. Was it as exciting meetings as well?
Okay, we'll proceed now with item 15, which is a lien release request.
Yes. I'm June Mattson.
I'm James Mattson.
Where do we start? Do we just start and tell you the story? Okay, we, our divorce became final on June 3rd, in the process of trying to refinance my home so I can keep it. With my son, I learned that there is a lien on the property in James' name, in Jim's name, and he had gone to court for that, and the judge dismissed the case. I called, we called many places, one of them was Jessica with the Small Claims Court. She said it was just a comment in the computer, there is no document to make a copy of, which is the same as Holly told us, you know, there's a note in the computer that the judge dismissed the case, so our goal today is to have it removed off of the property at 143 MacArthur, which is my property.
And I have one acre land that I bought in 1977, have several, have had several mobile homes on it, there's one on there currently. We're requesting that you transfer the lien over to my property until we can get this settled. We, this, we never received, I never received a notice that there was a claim for the $630 until Consumer Credit, what is it, Consumer Credit, what?
Credit Collections Bureau.
Credit Collections Bureau notified me, I asked them for an itemized statement, they just said it's medical, they can give me one, I went to Small Claims Court over it, I would gladly pay it if I knew what it was, they said it was for something else, a bus ride home from Yankton, so, anyway, we would request just today for the, you put it on my land until we can settle it further.
Do we have any legal counsel in the room? Oh, there he is.
No, I'll grab the one that actually knows.
We don't want to, we don't want to complicate your lives any further.
Were you two married?
Were married July 20...
4/2010?
Yes, married July 25th of 2009.
Because the reason I ask is, if it's for, indeed for medical, it doesn't matter, when you're married, it doesn't matter which one of the partners incurs a medical bill, both of them owe it, but it's quite novel to have a divorced couple in here agreeing on something. As a former divorce attorney, I find that kind of not pleasing, enlightening, actually.
Life is too short to be ornery and nasty, and that's not how it is, so.
Okay, our lawyers in the room now, Jay, are you familiar with this issue?
I am, passing away.
And I guess the question is, do you have any heartburn over it, or is it something we can do?
You absolutely can do it, and I have no heartburn over it. In a divorce decree upstairs, in my opinion, a judge could do something along these lines, and a property distribution could say, you get this property, you get this property, you get these debts, and so on and so forth, but what a judge, I do not believe, can do upstairs is release a county lien. The issue in this case, and please step in and correct me if I get some facts wrong, but in this case, your names are both on a deed to the property that you will end up with and are living in currently.
Yes.
You have your own real property and are living in currently.
Yes.
But with a county aid lien, county aid liens, if the service is provided during the course of the marriage, the lien is against the married couple, not just the individual person who literally benefited directly from that service. So, this lien affects both individuals and that property. What the couple here is trying to do is say, we have imicably divided our property, the lien will not go away against the gentleman standing next to me, it will be as it is right now, it's attached to his current property in a different location. You're trying to refinance.
Yes.
The bank, very legitimately, is saying, we see that there is a joint lien, even though you were not specifically the recipient of that service, your husband was, the lien is still good against your property that you're receiving as a part of the dissolution of the marriage, so we will not refinance. We've done this in the past, sometimes you subordinate a lien, meaning the mortgage or refinance becomes a priority, but that would still leave the lien on her property, and she wasn't the recipient, literally, of the service. So, the county commission has the authority to do any, basically anything they want with their own lien. Something we have done in the past, and that's why I support it here, is a very specific motion, which I've drafted for your consideration, to lift or release that lien, you're not invalidating the lien, you're not getting rid of the lien, you're only releasing it as to that specifically legally described piece of property that she will own on her own and live in. The lien will stay of record, and will attach to any property that the gentleman here currently owns, has an interest in, or will acquire in the future.
And has anybody checked to see, if he owns Lot B of Block 104?
Yes, he does, there's a deed, I've renewed the...
And when that lien then attaches to that property, does it become priority lien? Are our liens priority, or if there's a bank mortgage?
When they were perfected, when they were filed.
So, the bank mortgage on it would be ahead of us?
They're not going to issue a warranty deed on any property that has a lien, go through a title company, and they're not gonna...
No, but if they foreclose, they foreclose, that's off.
Right. And that comes down to what's called a purchase money mortgage, where the mortgage was issued cash to actually purchase the property versus buy a note or something of the same type. I guess a little more technical, but in this case, that's not what's going on here, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I might, are you done?
Yeah.
Jay, this, this property that we're wanting to reattach this lien to, is it a free and clear piece of property that we would have a first lien against, or if there's a mortgage against this, we'd be out, could be out in the cold the minute we do this, for the taxpayer's money, so that's what I'm wondering.
Yes, could I answer? Yes, it is currently the mobile home that I have on there, and the acre of land is currently taxed as real estate, but Bank of America owns the, I have a loan to Bank of America that I owe 26,000 on yet for that, both them two properties, or for the mobile home and the acre of land. So, I guess I don't know exactly what more you want, you could...
I hate to get clear into your personal situations, but during, in the divorce decree, what is, what's the judge saying about the bill? How are they being?
We didn't know about this bill until we went to refinance, until I went to refinance.
Okay, so that hasn't been in front of a judge?
Not as far as this bill itself, this lien, no, we didn't know about that.
And the judge, I don't believe, the judge could say, you get the subject property that you issued here, and you need to pay that off. The judge could do that, but I don't think the judge would have the authority to say, I'm gonna lift the lien, that's...
No, that's not what I'm asking, I'm asking exactly what you said the first time. He can order somebody else to pay it, but not lift the lien.
And we're just trying to do that, you know, more so ourselves, saying, if it comes off my property and goes to his.
I guess, I got one more question to ask, if I did pay that, can I come back and have another meeting with you guys to, like I, like when I went to Small Claims Court, and the judge ruled in my favor there, could I come back and present the same thing to you guys again? And if it was so much ruled in my favor again, could you reimburse me back the $630? I guess that's what I'm asking, is that...
My understanding is that there is, you're not, you're not saying you didn't receive any service from the county?
No, no, I did receive the service from the county.
For $600, so if you paid the $600, that would satisfy the lien, it would be gone.
Except for, the only thing I have with that is, they said it was for a bus trip home from the Human Service Center in Yankton, and I have the ticket for the bus tick, bus trip home, and it was, you know, 100 and...
17.
41, or 51 dollars, it wasn't 630 dollars.
There would be some cost for your stay in Yankton.
Yeah, do you want that cost?
But they hadn't supplied that to him, so when he went to court, what he was told is for, it was the person who was representing CCB apparently, or something?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
I think that really we need to get back to the fact that, you know, you mentioned about the being secondary on the lien run, well, we already are, because it's, there's already a mortgage on the property she's trying to refinance, so it doesn't change our position any by moving it from one to the other piece of property.
It does change the position, because now you've got your hands on two pieces of the property, pretty soon you're only gonna have one, if we change it.
No, it's not on the second piece of property, it's only on the first one, on her piece.
It's not on mine right now.
Yeah, it is.
It would be.
It's on both, it's on both of you.
If you did, if you did this, it would be, and I'm okay with that.
No, it still is. The minute you bought it, it attaches.
Any property that you have an interest in, it's on what we're talking about, just releasing the property.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to release and remove the lien 202L, in the name of James Mattson, from Lot B Block 104 of Mahoney, addition to the city of Rapid City, et cetera, et cetera.
Karen, do you have, yeah, so, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to release and remove the lien and transfer it, as printed here, any further discussion?
My only thing is, that these two people, obviously, like I said, I've never seen them before, so I think they deserve a break for being divorced and agreeing on something. Guy be first.
That's, that's good. Okay, any other comments? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is item 16, the Rapid City Public Library update.
Good morning, I'm Vera Cole, the county liaison to the Public Library Board.
I'm Rod Pettigrew, board chairman of the Rapid City Public Library.
So, we're here just to present a brief update, and you don't have in your report, but I'll just give you a brief security update, you've heard of the recent issues at the library, and the board has taken some decisive action to have full-time security at the library. A police liaison has been appointed to work with and train all the staff, and that is an ongoing process at the moment, and we are in the midst of proceeding to hire a new library director, and with a new director, we feel that we can move in a new direction and improve the culture at the library, and really address all the issues that the community members have, and the board has. And I would also like to mention that the process of hiring the director is evolving at the moment, but the board feels strongly that the commission should be involved in some way, and whether it's the entire commission or a member or two, at least interviewing and meeting the final candidates in the process as we go along. Currently, the job posting, I believe, will be open until the end of July, so sometime after that. So, that's, brief update on that, and then I believe you all have a copy of the statistics and data from this first quarter of the library. Hopefully, we've provided a little bit more information that you asked for last time and wanted to see. You can see the total number of borrowers, now you have raw data in addition to percentages, and so, out of a little over 44,000 cardholders in the Rapid City library system, 36,000 are Rapid City residents, and then you have the 7,118 that are outside of Rapid City and within Pennington County, and that currently amounts to 16.1% of library users. Further, the users are divided up by area, and when the census was done, I guess these are called census tracts that surround Rapid City, and you have there a chart that shows where our patrons come from, from within Pennington County, and so, the majority there are from the western side of Rapid City, but you can see all the different, the distribution there of where the county residents are coming from. And I believe you also have, do you have the map that shows Pennington County? Holly, do they have that? That's actually interesting to look at, I'll just, you can look at all the numbers and... and the solid numbers there in each county represent the raw number of cardholders in each section of the county there, each census tract. So focus over where Wall is, and you can see the number of residents that have a card. And then in the circle, there's also, that tells you the percentage of residents in that tract that own a card for the Rapid City Library. So I thought that was pretty remarkable. I think it's nearly half in Wall area have a card to use the Rapid City Public Library, despite the fact that there is a library in Wall. So it does tell you that the services that the city library provides to the county residents is very important and is utilized quite a bit. So we thought that that map was actually very interesting to show where the users come from. And then back to this report, you can also see that the usage of materials pretty closely parallels the, where the users come from. So it just tells you that in general, users are using the same types of materials, regardless of where they live. And finally, at the end there of the report, I believe you all got electronic versions of this too, and so there are active links in there if you'd like to see some of the online services that the library provides, if you're not familiar with what some of these subscription databases might be, or the RSS feeds and so on. Do you have any specific questions for me?
Mr. Chair, I just like to thank you, Vera, because you have really worked at getting information for us, and I appreciate that. I really do. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a comment, I guess. With the huge use of other digital material, why do we still call them borrowers?
Well, a lot of the digital material, like the eBooks, for instance, the book that is an electronic copy of the book, you're still borrowing it. You don't have permanent use of that. So when you use your library card, you go online and you can download the entire text of the book, whatever book, onto your iPad or your Kindle. It automatically disappears from your device within two to three weeks, depending upon which time period you selected for borrowing. So you are, in fact, borrowing it because the library has to pay for individual electronic copies. So if they only purchase five electronic copies of any particular book, then only five patrons can check that book out at one time. So some people think because you have an electronic copy, you know, you could have a hundred people check that book out at once, but that's not the case. If the library buys five electronic copies, you can have five borrowers download that at once, and then when they return it or when their time period is up, then it can go to another borrower. And the beauty of that is the library, then the patron doesn't have overdue fines because it automatically goes away from their device.
But in terms of the personnel required to physically check out a book and bring it back, you don't have to do that with.
With electronic media, you don't. There's still a learning curve to learn how to do that, and so there are library staff that are actually helping people learn how to do this for the first time. But once the patron knows how to do it, they really, no, they don't need.
And I guess my point is that that green line doesn't necessarily translate into the need for more staff or.
No.
That sort of thing.
No, exactly.
And staff means money.
Correct. No, no. In fact, that's the beauty of digital use. You can actually, you know, have access. People, a lot more people can have access without increasing the resources. Yep.
Anything else? Thank you, Vera.
Okay, thank you.
For the public's information, item seventeen was removed from the agenda. And we will move then to item eighteen from the county auditor. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
To save a lot of time and talking and things, I don't see anything in here that says from the sheriff's office that none of these licenses should be granted, that there's any problem. If I miss something, I'd like to hear about it. And if I don't hear anything about it, I make a motion that we approve items from the auditor A, B, and C in one swoop.
Mine's by me.
I'll second that.
Okay, the only question I have in the motion for approval, malt beverage licenses, that Mike's Laundry had a line through the, through the name on the application, and I was wondering if that's a mistake or. Right up here.
Yes, it's clearly crossed out. I do not know. Why? Because it was advertised as a public hearing for Mike's Laundromat. I can surely check with Vicky if you'd like and get back to. Want to pause here? I can go get her, and it'll just take a second, I'm sure, for that explanation, because I cannot answer to you why that's crossed out. Karen, you have any idea? Thanks. You know why this Mike's Laundromat is crossed out?
Yes. He wanted to change the name of it from Mike's Laundromat to a corporation. And I told him he couldn't unless I checked with the state. And I talked to the state, and he said he needs to leave it at that name until he files a name change with sales tax. So he had crossed it out. So that is why.
We're approving Mike's Laundromat, yes.
It is still Mike's Laundry.
Any other questions? If not, we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, KJ. Next item is item nineteen.
Good morning, Commissioners. Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. You have an abatement request. It actually comes from our office. This is a property that was exempt from property taxes because it was owned by a church. The church sold it to Shear, I think is how you pronounce the name. It became taxable when the private person bought it. We add it to the tax roll, but we have to wait until the tax bill comes out before we add it to the tax bill. These people built a fourplex on it. They must have done it awfully quick. By the time we go to the computer to look at the value to add to the tax bill, there's a fourplex substantial amount of value on it, and we mistakenly added the whole works. It should be just the property as they bought it added to the tax bill. The fourplex goes on next year's assessment. So we added more value than what we should have for the year of this. And the abatement gets rid of that contributory value of the fourplex.
Mr. Chair. How much land are we talking about here?
I don't know. It's a city lot or a couple city lots, small.
Any other questions? Seems like we have one of these every meeting.
You do.
Do we have a motion?
Uh-huh, it's our here. So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the abatement in a tax amount of eight thousand four hundred seventy dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Chair. Shannon, is this a complete abatement?
No.
Or is there a difference amount that's still on?
That's right. The abatement amount is the value of that fourplex. The property owner bought it without that, added that to the property. So the tax bill should be the land that they bought and not the land and the fourplex.
How much did they pay for the land, you know?
Says fifty-nine.
Sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, fifty-nine, six-twenty-seven.
I thought that's just what you appraised it at.
Well, they paid sixty thousand.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis, I apologize. I do have the size of the land. It's a quarter of an acre.
Thank you. Next item is item twenty, items from the fire administrator.
Good morning. Denny Gorton, County Fire. State law requires that if there's gonna be a public display of fireworks, that the governing body has to issue an approval or a permit for that. Black Hill Speedway is requested to have a public display on July fifth of this year, after the races Friday night. And I have all the information that we need. I have a diagram, certificate of insurance, naming Pennington County as an additional name, the name and address of the pyrotechnician, their qualifications. The only thing I don't have is an actual invoice of the details showing, but they have a list of the fireworks that they plan on using. And we do know the date, which is July fifth. So that's where we stand with that.
Any questions by the commission?
You're gonna be the only fireworks in town, practically.
Come and watch. You'll enjoy it.
I do need to, if you remember last year, I believe it was like on July second or July third, the commission passed a resolution to ban all open burning and all discharge of fireworks for last July due to the drought. Earlier this year, a couple months ago, I had come in and asked you to lift the burn ban on open burning, which you did, but you did not rescind the ban on fireworks. So the ban on fireworks, I believe, still stands. Is that correct, Jay? Is that the way you'd interpret that since, okay?
But does that include public displays? Isn't that, doesn't that fit under a different category?
Mr. Chairman, Denny mentioned, all of these issues came up last year, and as Commissioner Busker is well aware, the legislature, there was some legislation introduced, some, I think they extended the firework discharge season this year. Make a long story short, my opinion a year ago was that the county commission does not have authority to ban fireworks on the third, fourth, and fifth of July. That's how I read the statute. Unbeknownst to me, someone brought that issue to the Attorney General's office, and the Attorney General reviewed all of the same laws and rules and regs that I did and came to precisely the identical opinion as mine. The Attorney General said a county commission does not have authority to prohibit the use of fireworks on July second, third, or third, fourth, and fifth. So honestly, the failure to lift the ban on the prohibition against the use of fireworks is illegal. The commission does not have that authority. And as far as I know, law enforcement will not be issuing tickets for the discharge of fireworks out in the county on July third, fourth, and fifth. As with regard to public display of fireworks, I questioned last year the ability to have public displays outside the allowed fireworks usage dates in statute. And I learned rather quickly that there was a variety of opinions on that subject across the state, and certainly, public displays have been allowed at all different events throughout the year. Not during the timeframes that you or I could shoot some fireworks off. I did have an informal conversation with the Attorney General's office. They recognized that, and they were taking the position that as long as a county commission were willing to issue a permit, they certainly had authority to issue a permit for a public display outside of the typical days that a regular citizen could shoot off fireworks. Because they know that's going on statewide, counties allow that, and the AG's office did not feel that that was wrong. They didn't issue an official opinion on it because it wasn't presented to them for that purpose, but, so I backed off on my opinion on that and said, public displays, my understanding is statewide, that's the opinion of the Attorney General, so they can be allowed any time of the year, so long as the permit process goes through Denny, all the criteria is met, and insurance and all the different questions that are asked. So, say all that to say this, as long as all that criteria has been met, I think the county commission has absolute authority to issue that. And the present fact that the resolution prohibiting fireworks was not technically rescinded is null and void.
For those three days.
For those three days.
Mr. Chair.
Well, and.
We have, we have had two miracles happen today. We've had two attorneys that agree, and two people standing side by side there to get in a divorce. Now, that's, that is a miracle.
In other words, to make a short story long, what you're saying is, we can approve this. And that's my motion.
Absolutely.
I knew we got done too soon. We do even have a requested motion printed here. Does anyone care to make that motion? Second, anyone?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think the maker of the motion should read it, so the public knows what's being.
I make a motion to approve a public display of fireworks for the Black Hill Speedway on July fifth, provided meeting all the requirements of the fire administrator of Pennington County.
And that meets the approval of the second? Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Chair, there is. I'm sorry to delay this, but now, with the certificate of liability insurance here, we're talking about a two million dollar policy, correct?
That's the way I read that, yes.
Okay, 'cause I was reading the back part of it over here, and the insurance agent seems to think that a million is plenty, and so I'm not sure. With a limit of a million per occurrence and two million per aggregate limits. So I, as long as we're staying on two million, what's on the policy, that's fine by me.
Yep. That's the way I would read it, that it's two million, so.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I might, we have a gentleman just came in the room, Representative Phil, or Senator Phil Jensen, sorry about that, Phil. I downgraded you just a little bit. Senator Phil Jensen just came in. I presume he was gonna be here for the egg deal, but we'll talk about it a little later, how things came out. Thanks for being here. Next item is item twenty-one, Highway Department.
Good morning. Hany Jang, Highway Superintendent. I have one item on agenda, and that's award recommendation for, award recommendation for bridge repairs for three bridges. I believe one is located on Nemo Road, one is located I believe one is located on Nemo Road, one is located on Forest Road, and the other one is on Shields Road. And we opened bids on June 5th. We had four bidders. Answorth Benning, we had a bid of $128,970. Core construction of Hermosa, $133,303. JV Bailey of Rapid City, an amount of $135,811. And RCS Construction of Rapid City, an amount of $186,078. We've reviewed the bids, and it is our recommendation that we award the bid to the low bidder, which was Answorth Benning, in the amount of $128,970.
Okay, any discussion?
That'd mean my motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion to...
Low bidder, Answorth Benning, construction in the surface of South Dakota.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to award the bid to Answorth Benning. And Karen has that, those details, so any further discussion? Hearing done. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, honey. Item twenty-two from the public defender. Defend yourself.
Good morning. I have a motion pending before the Board of Commissioners requesting approval to create the position of Office Manager within my office, as well as a second part of the motion to approve the reclassification outside of wage policy. Because I would intend to promote an individual from within the office to the position. As indicated in the motion, it's, first of all, I had requested permission to do this through the Public Defender Advisory Board at our meeting on May 23rd of this year. That motion carried. Secondly, it's also my recommendation that our department would operate more efficiently and provide more effective service, services if we did have an Office Manager. The Office of the Public Defender used to have an Office Manager to manage what non-attorney staff, as well as basic office procedures required of attorneys, for example, billing, file closing procedures, file maintenance procedures, those sort of things. And, and so, that, as my understanding, worked much better. When that position existed within the Public Defender's Office, it was determined by the interim Public Defender, Mr. Diggins, that that would be a helpful position as well. It is also my concurrent position that that is also necessary. I have much broader requirements, and I need to make sure that the sort of 5,000 people who we represent each year are going to have effective representation. This is, there is a need, and I lack the expertise frankly to be able to determine from front office staff as far as secretarial duties and their responsibilities. And so, I need somebody to manage those folks on a day-to-day basis. I will set broad policy, but the day-to-day enforcement of those policies is, we lack that in the office.
Any questions or comments? Yes.
Eric, you said there was an Office Manager there prior, so the job description and everything is in place?
We rewrote a job description. I don't, so I don't know if one existed. I don't know if it was done out of whole cloth, or if it was a piggyback on what the old Office Manager position was. But this, I remember from the advisory board, he'd asked me to make sure that this was reviewed through the HR department, which it has been, to make sure it was vetted for those purposes, but...
Okay, so we've got a, one of the motions then is to approve the job description for an Office Manager. Is that where we're at, or...
Let's call on Nick here.
Good morning. Nick Stroud, HR Director, Pennington County. I did work with Tom in, as the interim Public Defender, to create a job description, but this does not exist on our wage scale. So, I guess what we would be asking is to place a new job on our wage scale. We have the job description that Eric's right uncomfortable with, and we updated a legal secretary III to create a job description, but it's not actually on the wage scale.
So, there's no other county offices have an Office Manager?
We use the position of Admin Assistant III.
Okay.
In the county.
And where does that, Admin Assistant III, add on the pay scale?
It's the same as this is being requested.
Okay.
So, I think when we did this, it's just a different... I liked the term Office Manager. It meant more to me than an Admin Assistant III. And so, that's where Tom and I went with this, and...
Okay, so, and we don't have a copy of this, but you've reviewed the Office Manager position. Is generic enough that it can work in the Public Defender's Office or any other office within the county?
Absolutely. That was my goal.
And you would set that at a, at a grade eighteen?
Right.
Okay. I'm ready to make a motion unless somebody else is.
Okay, now, just, just to make sure, we're, we're, do we need to make any kind of motion relative to the job description itself?
I, I'm gonna find the memo here, but I would prefer the motion be to...
Creation of position?
Yeah. The creation of the position of Office Manager for Pennington County instead of Public Defender's Office, I guess, would be, because I plan on using, if...
Right. That would be my motion to approve the new job description of Office Manager for Pennington County and have the grade, set the grade at an eighteen, as recommended by our HR person.
Mr. Chair. Do we have a second?
I would, if I can just get one thing clarified. I'd say, I believe you said the position of Office Manager for Pennington County. Did that also add Public Defender's Office?
He's part of Pennington County, so he can use it as well as anybody else in the county.
But this particular one, this particular one, the way the motion is made, I think, is that that person that we're gonna put in that position would be the Office Manager for the entire Pennington County?
No.
No.
Well, maybe it's a matter of semantics then, and I can, I don't... But the Office Manager would be the Pennington County Public Defender's Office Manager, or the Pennington County planning and zoning Office Manager. For exam, it would just be whatever, it's just a title to sub in for whatever department decided to use it. So, maybe not Office Manager of Pennington County, but the position of Office Manager, period, within Pennington County. I don't know the proper wording, but it wouldn't be a Pennington County Office Manager. It would be an Office Manager position for whatever department decided that that was best for their department.
You'd be adding the category...
Correct.
Yes.
To the wage scale.
Yes, sir.
Is that...
Yes, that was our intention.
So, are we clear?
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion and a second, as long as we don't create chaos. Nancy seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I don't want to belabor things, but we're making a motion to create a position then throughout Pennington County if somebody else decides to use it. Now, are we gonna make another motion to put that position in place in the Public Defender's Office?
We've never done that before. I think we, at least since I've been here, you've left it up to the department heads to move people into created positions. If Eric, if this was created and then Eric decided to move someone into that, that would be without a motion. And KJ can...
I would agree with that. You just created a new job. Your second motion is gonna just be to approve the reclassification of the existing employees.
Okay, are we square? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now, we need the reclassification motion, correct?
Mm-hmm.
That was part of your motion, wasn't it? Was it an eighteen?
Well, no, I think, I think now, you need, now you need a motion to approve the reclassification of a legal secretary III, and I don't know who that person is, to the Office Manager position.
Yeah.
The way our wage policy is written is a person who moves from one step on our scale to a higher step, two, excuse me, from one grade on a scale to a higher grade must go to the next step where they don't lose salary. And what the request is, is to not put them at that next step where they don't lose salary, but further on the wage scale.
That person's currently at a sixteen?
Correct.
And you wanna move him, a sixteen B, and you wanna move him to a, I don't know what LB stands for.
We created secondary steps on our scale last year, so rather than just having letters, A, B, C, D, we created secondary steps, which we just attached.
What's, what's the difference, I mean, if, if they stayed within the policy, it would go...
It would be thirty-nine dollars a month or four-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars a year.
Difference?
Yes.
Between the sixteen LB and the eighteen LB?
No, the eighteen I, which is where, which is within the wage policy.
Okay, and what is it between, if we went to the sixteen LB and the eighteen LB?
Four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars a month or four-two-two-two a year.
Is there anything in between thirty-nine dollars and four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars?
There's seven steps.
There's seven steps in between those two?
Yes.
So, I guess, the question, Eric, is justify why that person should get a four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollar a month raise for these additional duties.
Absolutely, and I understand that, the justification for that amount, and I ask for approximately that amount, because this individual is now going from legal secretary duties as well as some of the voucher systems and things to have broad authority over both staff as well as attorneys. I think that that's taking a lot of more pressure, responsibility on an individual. Also, this allows me to frankly not create another FTE, it, as I can promote from within, so that this one person can do, wear a lot of different hats and have a tremendous amount of authority as well as responsibilities. As I looked at the position, to me, that number seemed like a fair amount to take on those responsibilities and, and authorities. And, and so, that's why I would ask for that request.
If I may, I, Eric and I didn't discuss this part of it, and I, and I know this person, I believe in their capabilities, but I would caution the board that these type of requests come to me a lot, and I usually, I'm not usually in support of them, but I always encourage the department heads to come to you. The idea that a department head is promoting someone means they believe in them, and I often hear these type of arguments or these type of presentations that, because, you know, thirty-nine dollars a month isn't very much, but that's what our wage policy is. And so, if this is the route that we want to go, I'm going to continue to say, "I don't think it's a good idea," but to come to the commission, so you might be hearing more of these. Because department heads believe in the people that they promote, and they want to try to get them the most, so that's all I'll say about that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think, Nick, you just answered my question and my heartburn that I had. Because my heartburn is that we're gonna wind up with eighteen new Office Managers. Every department now is gonna want a new Office Manager, so we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a department head, an assistant department head, or a chief deputy, and then we're gonna have an Office Manager. So, we're looking at a million and a half dollars worth of new salaries, if not more. And I, I wanna get this on the record, that I, I had no heartburn about doing what you wanted to do, Eric, to start with, but I do do it this, adding that position entirely of the county.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Well, Eric, is there something between four-hundred-and-twenty-six and thirty-nine? I mean, I, I would agree, you're giving this person additional responsibilities, and thirty-nine dollars, forty cents a month for taking on the additional responsibilities doesn't seem like it would be fair. But going to the four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars is a, is a big jump. I mean, it's five thousand, a little over five thousand dollars a year additional. And so, I would, I, you know, I think...
There's...
Yeah, we shouldn't, we shouldn't pay the person for the additional responsibilities, but then, the other thing that it does for them when you move them to the eighteen, it gives them a lot further to go with merit pay in, in the future. But if, if we make this big of a leap, then, then it really puts us into a position when other people come and want to do a reclassification, and, and we try to hold them to that standard that we have in place.
You know, Commissioner Holloway, if you, I could, I mean, I could read off the seven steps, or if you gave me an idea. I mean, we're, there's, there's a lot of different stuff that we could do, you know. The wage policy says to move this person to four-five-seven-five a month, four-five-seven-five. And there's four-six-four-four, four-six-nine-zero, four-seven-six-zero, four-eight-zero-seven, four-eight-seven-nine, four-nine-two-seven, and then the request was for five-zero-zero-one, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see Nick come back with something in writing to show us. I mean, just to say eighteen LB from sixteen LB doesn't mean anything, so, and sit and read them off, that... I mean, I, I guess, a couple of week delay is not gonna...
And maybe have the discussion between the two of you, 'cause you're, you're real aware of, Nick, of what's happening in the salary end of it for the county, so that might be helpful for you, Eric.
You know, I know you wanna, you wanna promote this legal secretary III, and I think that's a good idea. Maybe you need to go back with that person and try to get, try to get something more, where we're not, we're not making that big of a jump and, and get them to agree with it and come back in.
Okay, I'll be happy.
Do we need to make a motion to defer or anything to carry this?
I make a motion to continue. Item twenty-two B until July 2nd.
Second. We have a second on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item is weed and pest.
Good morning. Scott Guffey, Pennington County Weed and Pest Director. First item I have for you for discussion is the Black Hills Regional Mountain Pine Beal Coordinator, possible donation to the position. The coordinator is, he coordinates the Black Hills Working Group, Pine Beal Working Group, that Nancy and I sit on, along with all the other counties and the Black Hills and South Dakota and Wyoming, and along with federal and state representatives, and the timber industry folks also sit on there. And the working group's in charge of carrying out the goals and objectives of the regional pine beal strategy that everybody adopted last year. Dave Thome is our current coordinator, and I don't think we could have handpicked a better coordinator. He's done an excellent job since taking that position September of last year. The seed money that was donated that Pennington County was also part of has been spent. This past spring, we were awarded a South Dakota, or is it a state and private forestry federal grant, and it was for three years' worth of funding for that position, and that, with the sequester, that money has been recalled or rescinded. So, we're back in front of the donators, I guess. donators, I guess, asking for additional donations to keep this position in place until we can secure some more long-term grant funding for this. In my memo, I mentioned that we have fifty-five thousand dollars left, and the eighty thousand from the emergency disaster fund that was earmarked or put in the pine beetle designation. The reason we have that amount is the state dollars have kicked in, we can start using the state dollars, so there's, there's money left there, and I'm suggesting, and I bounced this off the Pennington County Pine Beetle Working Group, that we use five thousand of that to donate to the coordinator position.
Is that what all the counties are doing?
Talking Lawrence County, it sounds like they're gonna, they're gonna request five thousand from Lawrence, and I think Meade as well, not sure about Custer. And then Nyaman's Timber Company just donated seventeen thousand to the position.
We were also told by, I just lost his name, Scott, Head Forestry.
Ray Solis.
Ray Solis, from the state, that, that this, this grant process will happen again, and we will again apply for it, you know, you don't get a guarantee, but the fact that we were approved is, is a good thing, and, and initially, that was going to take care of three years of salary, but with the sequester, that changed that quite a bit.
And we're looking at some other grant opportunities, Altitude, to secure some funding.
We've also started the process of doing some private donations, there are some folks out there who want to do private donations, and we can, they can do that through the RCND and donate it to our program, so.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion to take five thousand of the remaining fifty-five thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars of MPB Emergency Disaster Fund, as, and donate to the continuation of the Black Hills Regional Pine Beetle Coordinator position.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you. Second item I have for you today is the update on job descriptions to the pesticide applicator one and two positions within the weed and pest department. Similar to what we did with the weed and pest directors position, the, the job duties have expanded, especially in the past decade with the west nile, and then now the mountain pine beetle, with new invasive species at the doorstep coming that we're going to have to deal with eventually. We just wanted to update the job description and bring it more in line. Pesticide applicator, they're not just pesticide applicators anymore, they're, are pine beetle survey crew members, and they're doing a lot more broad spectrum in their job duties, so we updated the job descriptions that are attached, and then we also, working with Nick Stroud, our HR director, we renamed those positions. The pesticide one applicator is our seasonal position, we renamed them to weed and pest technicians, and then the pesticide applicator two, he's basically my crew leader, my right-hand man, we renamed him to weed and pest crew leader, so, and then also with that, looking at the crew leader's position, I visited with Nick, and since he's got supervisory duties, and they've expanded on how long and number of employees he's supervising, we looked at the grade scale, and right at grade fourteen is where, on the existing Pennington County job descriptions, is when the supervisor duties start jumping in on the grade scale, so we recommended that goes to fourteen, we, I also took this in front of our, my Pennington County Weed and Pest Board at their May second board meeting, and they approved the renaming and the updating of the job descriptions, and the regrading of the weed and pest crew leader, and Nick also took it in front of the Wage Committee.
So the, the weed and pest technician will stay at a twelve?
At a seven.
At a seven?
They're at a seven right now, and they're looking at similar positions like the other counties, and the state pine, seasonal pine markers were right in line with them, so we thought the seven was fair.
So, so that position was formerly the pesticide applicator one?
Yep.
And then the two was?
Would be the crew leader.
The twelve?
Twelve to fourteen, yep.
And you, you have somebody in that position right now?
I do, yep.
Are you looking to give them a five thousand dollar?
No, if you look at my memo, for the remaining of the year, if we do it July one, he would get a six hundred and seventy-nine dollar raise for the remaining of the year, and then I figured into the 2014 budget.
And that's following the county's guidelines on re...
Yep, but that's where he'd fall in on the, on the wage scale.
You've done better than the other one, I think.
I can see why Nick needs help.
Mr. Chair, you might as well make him an office manager.
Any other comments? Nick, your...
Sure, we, Scott and I did redo these job descriptions, and the, the names are just more reflect, like Scott said, more, reflect better what they're going to do in the future. We did take this to the Compensation Committee, there was a recommendation of the Compensation Committee that Scott use out-of-class pay, rather than moving it on the wage scale, that was the recommendation, and for, you know, he can expand on why he didn't think that would work for his office. The out-of-class pay, which is used by highway mainly, is, it's a little more fluid, if you have, if the person steps into a foreman position, for example, for a couple of weeks while the foreman's on vacation, then that person receives the out-of-class pay, or if there's a special project that a maintenance worker needs to become a foreman, and then go back down, that's what's used, but when we presented that to Scott, he, and I'll let him expand on why he didn't think that would work for this position.
Mr. Chair, if I may, question for Nick. But, but Nick, there isn't, are you saying then we should create the weed and pest crew leader at a fourteen, and then he could keep his person as an applicator two, and just pay him out of class up to the, to the weed and pest crew leader position?
The idea was just to change the title, from the Compensation Committee, just change the title from applicator two to weed and pest crew leader, leave him at a twelve.
Okay.
And then use the out-of-class pay.
So what would he, what would he be, what would you, what class would you be paying him at, then?
Well, the way the, and KJ can jump in on this, she's payroll expert, but the out-of-class pay is two dollars.
Two dollars an hour. And that was primarily created in the highway department, and the thought was, rather than moving one person into the crew leader position assigned, they would, whoever would be working at that.
What, what I don't understand, though, is, is the two dollar an hour something that the, that the wage policy has in place, that any time you pay somebody out of class, they get two dollars an hour?
That's the motion that currently exists for highway, the only other department that utilizes out-of-class pay regularly every month is E-911, and they came in with specific different dollar amounts, but there is a motion by the Board of Commissioners to classify crew leader at that two dollars an hour for out-of-class pay.
And, and I, I thought, I thought the out-of-class was, you were paying, this person was assuming a, a foreman position, for example, and the difference between what the foreman makes and this class that the person is at, that that's what the difference of pay was? I didn't think it was this established amount.
It's a set established amount of the two dollars.
I see, okay, thank you.
And I guess the reason why I didn't want to do the out-of-class is, you know, they talked highway department, well, those guys are full-time, I have one full-time guy, my weed and pest crew leader, he's always going to be my crew leader, if he's gone, I'm not going to move up one of my seasonals to, to run the crew, we're just going to leave him there, so for the ease of budget figuring and everything else like that, I'd just soon move him to a fourteen and leave it, then trying to figure that two dollar, and then moving seasonals into a crew leader for a while, I mean, I just, he's my full-time guy, and he's going to be my crew leader all the time.
So your idea would be if, if you, if you did what, if you left this weed and pest crew leader position as a, as a twelve, that you would, you would pay him out of class all the time, then?
That's the Wage Committee's recommendations, but I'd just soon move him to a fourteen, and he's set there.
That makes sense to me.
Any further discussion?
So Scott, really what happens is that if you're gone, the crew leader is going to be taking kind of the supervisory?
No, he's, he supervises my seasonals.
Okay.
He runs the seasonal, he oversees as well as I do, but I usually give direction to my crew leader on, okay, I need this to be done, make sure this is, and this is done, so he runs the seasonal, meets, takes them out and oversees them, so.
But he's really not running a crew leader eight or nine months a year, because the way things are set up now, you're, you're running your weed and pest program now, are you, but about the time that that ends, you start into your mountain pine beetle, and then they're up there marking trees.
Yeah, we go, we weed spray from like May through September, and then from September through February, March, we're marking pine beetles.
It would seem like if you paid him, kept him at his current scale, and then paid him two bucks an hour more, and if he did that for the, for the year, he'd be making over four thousand dollars a year more.
Yeah, that's right.
That doesn't make any sense.
It's going to cost more.
Well, I'm not the Wage Committee, I'm just the representation of, so.
Well, I was just trying to understand it, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat you up about it, I'm just asking questions.
What you're saying is, don't shoot the messenger?
There's nine of us, if you want to line us all up, and...
Nope.
Be at the flog and post it too, this afternoon.
Okay, I'll be there. It, and what, when, and Scott and I looked at this, and the question was posed, where do supervisors start on the scale, and I felt that I didn't recommend it, and I don't know if that's what your comment was, Commissioner Busker, I wasn't recommending it, I was simply telling him fourteen is where it starts.
No, my, my comment was directed toward, now, this is, we're starting to get regrades and new job descriptions every, every meeting.
They're coming to me every month, and I'm making my recommendations and passing them along, I don't feel that it's my position to say yes or no.
Any further comments? See, do you, do you need one motion or two?
I don't, I don't think we're, we're not, we're not motioning to update the job descriptions and the titles, those are just more for informational purposes, at least how, how we've been doing in the past few months, unless you feel better updating the titles, because they are going to go on the wage scale. So it could be one motion to approve the name change from applicator one to weed and pest technician, and pesticide applicator two to weed and pest crew leader, and move the crew leader from a twelve to a fourteen, or you could do it in two motions, but that's the three things, I guess, we're looking for.
Okay, what's the issue to the commission?
Mr. Chair, I, I would make a motion to update the job descriptions with new titles, naming the weed and, the applicator two?
One.
One, to the weed and pest technician, and the applicator two to the weed and pest crew leader, and reclassify or regrade the weed and pest crew leader position to a grade fourteen effective July one, 2013.
Is there a second? I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Just got one more question, this, you, and you probably already said this, but I just want to clarify it for myself, because you, you did, this did go to the Wage Committee, and they approved the job renaming and job glass, or job renaming to the new titles?
Yes, yes.
And, and, but they did not agree to the grade for the weed and, weed...
It was presented back to the weed and pest director as a consideration of an alternative to moving on the grade.
But they didn't address the grade for that position?
When we brought up the grade, they said, it was a consensus, and KJ's another member of the committee, but it was a consensus of the group when we voted that the weed and pest director should consider out-of-class pay if it's going to be a fluid position, as opposed to...
Well, that's not my question, though. My question is, did, did they set a, a salary or a grade for the, for the crew leader?
Leave it at a twelve.
Leave it at a twelve, okay.
And consider the out-of-class pay as a, a way to compensate.
Well, then, then let me ask you this, and, and KJ can jump in on it, because if the, if the job description for the crew leader has him supervising people, what would he have to do to be considered out of, out of grade pay? What would he have to do different than what the job description says?
When Scott and I talked afterwards, the idea would be to change the job description to pull out, say, have the crew leader pull out the supervisory duties, leave it as more of an applicator two with a different name.
Okay.
And then move the supervisory, supervisory duties to whoever was performing at that time. When Scott and I visited afterwards, he says it's only one guy, I'm comfortable with having the crew leader position, I'm comfortable with having one person do that full-time, so.
So, so now we're back to the, the Compensation Committee didn't approve the wage and pest crew leader title, you wanted to leave it as an applicator two?
We really, in essence, were leaving it there and suggesting that he utilize the out-of-class pay, and speaking as one member of that committee, we talked about how crew leaders are utilized in the county, primarily out at the highway division, and, and the key discussion was, leave them where they are, and utilize that so that if the person who does this approximately ten months out of the year is on vacation for two weeks, somebody else would, and that's, was the logic behind our recommendation. Quite frankly, at that point, we didn't go back any further, it was taken to Scott, and he brought it here. Listening to Scott speak today, I, I would, I, I understand a little bit more clearly that he has one person who guides his crew, and if he goes off on vacation, even if it's in July, he probably doesn't move anybody up there, whereas over at the highway division, where he has many crews, and they are about four or five people, and if one goes out for two weeks, somebody does step in and run the crew for the whole two weeks, and they give them the two dollars, and when they're on vacation, they don't get the two dollars, and when they're not running the crew, they don't get the two dollars. So I believe, in my opinion, as we discussed it at the Compensation Committee, it seemed advantageous, quite frankly, to use the out-of-class pay, rather than creating, or re, re, not only regrading and re-titling him to the crew leader position. I, I clearly see where Scott's coming from, he's, he's not fifty people of, of a department, he's, he's two or three, and, and that grows to, to about ten or twelve in the high seasons. So a little bit different consideration. We were trying to not create too many job descriptions, come to the board, so we said, here's a solution, doesn't even require going to the board, utilize out-of-class. So that's, I think, where the, the Compensation Committee was coming from.
We do have a motion and a second, any further...
We do have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
My dilemma comes if I got two or three survey crews out there, and I got one guy kind of designated that's gonna run the crew, that's not my crew leader, well then, if we do the, the $2 raise, well then, he'd probably want the $2 raise too because he's running that crew for the day, and really, he's, it's gonna end up, if we go that route, it's gonna cost a lot more, I think, than just keeping it as a seasonal and a full-time crew leader.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 24, request to waive administrative and penalty fees, Mr. Donald Johnson.
Hi, I'd like to thank you for hearing this. I applied, I got a property that I purchased last year, I'm new, relatively new to the purchase of property and stuff in, in, in South Dakota, so it was a, came as a surprise when I went to put a, I bought two lots, one of them had a single wide mobile home on it, and when the, when the lots were sold to me, it was my understanding that the lots were, and are already, already zoned as residential, single one acre lots. The area is in the Green Valley region, and there is probably 350 or so homes in that area, of which a large percentage of those homes are single wide mobiles. What I'm presenting today is, when I went to put the property, I'm moving my mother onto an adjacent lot, she's purchased a mobile home, we prepared the lot, went through the processes of, of applying for electrical licenses, the septic tank licenses, the, and the permits, the access permits through the Highway Department, those were all taken care of. But unbeknownst to me, there's a thing called a conditional use permit, that apparently it only applies in that area, it only applies to single wide mobile homes, it doesn't apply to a double wide that's going in next door to me, and it doesn't apply to, to, to places down where the guy just built a, a new structure on his property. We were never informed about any of those, so it didn't occur to me that there was anything like a conditional use permit. Likewise, I was, since I wasn't building anything, the property was being taxed and licensed through my, through my mother's lot, we were charged an additional fee for a building permit, and was, again, was unaware, since I wasn't building anything, that I had to build, had to have a building permit because the, the lots are not required to build anything. I, I put a foundation type forms in for her so her home was more stable, but, but, because I didn't want her living in a rickety home, but she went out and bought a new home, which is in compliance with the regulations and the, and the districting for those, those lots out there. So what happened, we got the home moved in, and it was in the process of preparing this for my mother that we ended up getting a letter from the county, I don't know where, where their notification came from, but, and that's irrelevant, but it was, it was quite a surprise to me to come in and find out that we had an $1,100 application process for a conditional use permit because it was a single wide mobile home, and especially in that area with so many single wides, it never occurred to me, and then of course, the building permit, which was something I wasn't aware of either. We weren't trying to avoid anything, and we were not attempting to circumvent any aspect of the code, but what we ended up doing was creating kind of a mess, and unfortunately, this is a, this is a mess that comes out of my mother's retirement, is what it boils down to. And so I'm just requesting from the permit, from the board, that relief the, the penalty patient, portions of the fees that were charged, there was $800 that was applied towards a penalty on the conditional use permit, and then there was a $279 penalty on the residential building permit, and I'm asking the board to consider relief on these two fines.
Any questions or comments by the commission?
Mr. Chair, aren't, aren't we supposed to be doing checklists when people come in and so on?
We do now have a building permit application with a checklist.
Come up to the mic, please.
Good morning, Lizanne Zeller from Pennington County Planning and Zoning. We do now have a checklist on our building permit application of the items that are needed to submit for a building permit. Mr. Johnson didn't come in for a building permit initially, so he never saw that checklist. The home got moved on.
But he came in for a septic.
He went to the city for a septic permit because the Green Valley Estates falls within one mile of Rapid City limits, so his septic permit was pulled from the city of Rapid City and not from our department. So he did get a city septic permit, and Rex, our code enforcement officer, is the one that noticed the home had been moved out there and actually called myself in the office, and he said, do they have a permit? And I said, well, I see a city septic, but no building permit. So he had gone to the city and gotten his septic permit.
So we don't, when, when the city issues a septic permit within that one mile area, we don't get any, we don't get anything on that?
We don't get notification, we do require a copy of the permit when they come to us for a building permit, but no, we don't receive notification that they've applied for a city.
It's my understanding that when I went in to see Louis, is that his name?
Yep.
When I went in to see Louis at the, for the city, he was telling me that, that they were doing the county jobs for the county at that time that I applied for, but that's what I understand, and he said, apparently they were, this, because there was something changing or something that was going on through a change at that time, so it just kinda, I don't know if it fell through the cracks, how it fell through.
But this is pretty recent, isn't it? Isn't that?
Yeah, yeah, we started the move process in February, I believe it was, is when we actually started identifying the need for what we were gonna do with the, with my mom's home. So we, we went in, we bought a property, we talked with those, the, the people that were, or the, the home, pardon me, to put in there, and we were kind of under the impression that they were gonna deal with that kind of stuff, but, you know, with, all they, all they really did is filed the tax documents for, for the mobile home, since that had to be done through the county, I don't know exactly what office that's done through, but it's through the tax assessor, I guess. So she maintained, she maintained, she maintains the home as her property, or as her real estate, but, or her property, mine is the, mine is the lot. I bought two lots, it wasn't my intention initially to put anybody on that adjacent lot, but circumstances with my mom just required that we do that, so we went ahead and made the arrangements. I knew I had authorization basically to build it, I wasn't trying to violate any codes or anything, it was just circumstances that kind of bypassed us.
So, so, right now with, with the permit fees and the penalties, it amounts to $1,170 and, and.
It should be 1,000, 1,079 total. The 1,170 that's on the bottom of that, that's on the conditional use permit, that was, that was the, I'm only, I'm only asking, I'm sorry, I might have misunderstood your question there.
Well, I had a question for.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Planning Department. The total is $1,170, and the penalties, and, and the penalties are 1,079 of that? So, so what, what's the other?
Sure, let me explain, so the, the normal conditional use permit application is $370, he was assessed an extra $800 in penalty fee, and then he also had to come in and apply for a building permit, to which a penalty fee was also assessed. So $800 of the 1,170 for the conditional use permit was penalty fees, and then the building permit, which normally would have been $279, was doubled, so there was another $279 in penalty fees for the building permit. So we have $800 in penalty fees for the conditional use permit, and $279 in penalty fees for the building permit, for a total of $1,079 in penalties.
Penalties?
Yes.
So, so he's already paid, he's already paid the, the conditional use permit fee and the building permit fee?
Yep.
Yeah, they've, all the entire amount has been paid, including the penalties have already been paid. I'm just asking for relief and, and on the, on the penalty phases, on the penalty portions.
Why don't, I, I, I don't know, this doesn't add up, but maybe I'm trying to.
Can I help clarify? So the $1,079 in penalty fees came from both the conditional use permit penalty fees and the building permit penalty.
So how much is this gentleman paid so far?
He's paid 11.
1755 bucks.
1755, yeah.
Yep.
Done. This is 585. Move this other over here.
Okay.
So I think you can see on the receipts there, the penalty fees for the building permit, $279, and the penalty fee for the conditional use permit was $800 on those two receipts. You know, I, I think a lot of times folks come in a little bit earlier in the process, so they ask for the $800 penalty fee to be waived, and then they haven't been assessed their building permit penalty fee yet, so a lot of times you as the commissioner just see the waiver of $800, so this is that normal request to waive the $800 conditional use permit penalty fee, plus the penalty fee that he's already paid for the building permit. So that's where we come up with the $1,079.
Hi, Mr. Chair, I just want to say one more thing. I don't know how often this happens, Lizanne, but, but it seems like we've had a real disconnect between the city and the county. How, I, I do think that needs to be fixed, and I know that you're not necessarily the person I should be saying that to, but I think it's unfortunate that we had a city office dealing with something that, and, and then he really needed to be coming to the county as well.
Yeah.
And there wasn't that information imparted.
And I think that's what he was stating earlier when he went to the city, and Louis Arwelo over there said, well, I'm just doing something the county maybe should be doing, but I'm doing it for now, there's been a lot of discussion about turning over that one mile septic back to the county, and I know it's additional workload for the county, but in my personal opinion, it would maybe alleviate some of the confusion that we have in situations like this, so folks just go to one office to get their permits.
Thinking that's all they need to do.
Yeah.
That's the shame of it, somehow that needs, we need to do something with that. Sophie, pass that on to Dan for me, please. You know, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion that we waive the total fees of $1,079 for Mr. Johnson, and actually refund it, I'm sorry.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, it seems like an awful lot of money. On the other hand, you know, most laws that are in place, I didn't know that it was a law, is never an excuse, never. Maybe we need to look at the amount of the penalty and reduce it or something so we don't have this all the time, but I won't be voting against this.
Any further discussion?
I will call both, Mr. Chairman.
We'll call it a roll, we have a motion and a second, motion to.
Busker?
No.
Davis?
She just goes alphabetically every time, don't she?
Same, same order every time.
No.
Holloway?
No.
Choughlin?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How about a 10-minute comfort break?
No.
You just sit right there, then I'm going.
You want to take a 10-minute recess? We need a motion.
That was a motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait for one more.
Well, we'll send the word.
Where are we? I don't know. Guess the thing isn't turned on at all.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to convene as a Board of Adjustments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Good morning, Lizanne Zeller from Pennington County Planning and Zoning. Agenda item A is a variance request, 1308. This is to exceed the maximum height requirement in a highway service district, which is 35 feet, to allow for a 126-foot tall structure. The applicant is Donald Purdue. This property is located at 9815 South Highway 16, approximately one half mile south of Reptile Gardens. The property is currently zoned highway service district, and a small portion is zoned general agricultural district. Specifically, the applicant is requesting this variance to construct a replica of the Independence Hall building, that would be 126 feet tall, including the, the top tower of the structure. This property was formerly home to an old white building that was previously called, I believe, Gravity Hill.
Cog motion.
You can see that in the southern portion of the property there, that building has been removed, and now the applicant is wishing to develop it, to construct this replica of the Independence Hall building. The use of itself is allowed, it'll be sort of like a museum on the main floor of the structure, he just needs the height variance to exceed the 35 maximum height requirement so he can build his structure taller than that. He is proposing onsite wastewater treatment system on the property, a well, 79 parking spaces, bus parking, et cetera, there is a site plan that's been included with your staff report showing the layout of all of that. This request was routed through the interdepartmental review process, we did get comments back from the county fire coordinator who had relayed this request to the Rockerville Fire Chief. There was some concerns about the height of the structure in terms of fire suppression and not having the adequate equipment to put out a fire on a 126-foot tall structure. There was also some concerns about traffic and water available on the property. So staff did coordinate a meeting with the applicant, his contractor, Denny Gordon from County Fire, and Paul Smith from the Rockerville Fire Department. This meeting did happen last Friday, June 18th. I have typed up a memo that I will hand out to you shortly as to what happened at that meeting, but we discussed several items and concerns that the fire personnel had, including the occupancy of the building and the capacity of it, the water available on site, how they were going to construct the building, traffic in the area, so on and so forth. And at the end of the meeting, I think the fire personnel was content with what the applicant was proposing, it was well understood that the Rockerville Fire Department does not have equipment that could put out a fire at that height, but the main occupancy, or the only occupancy of the building rather, is on the main floor of the structure, which is just 20 feet tall, so that was very well communicated to the applicant that they wouldn't be able to put out a fire on a height, on a structure of that height. At the conclusion of this meeting, the fire coordinator and Paul Smith from the Rockerville Fire Department did ask if a condition could be included with this variance, just stating that they would have a chance to review future construction plans, there are two additions proposed for this building, if they are able to expand in the future, they would like an opportunity just to review those plans, make recommendations for fire safety going forward. So I have typed up a memo with some wording on a condition that I will hand out to you now, that way you can see the wording in front of you. That way you can see the wording in front of you. So, in the staff report, staff had made a recommendation that we make sure the fire coordinator's comments are adequately addressed before we proceed with this variance request. I believe that they have been. Staff does not make recommendations on variances. However, I have included two conditions in the staff report if you do approve the variance. And then on the memo I just handed out, that would be a third condition, which states that prior to any further expansion of the proposed building, including the future additions shown on the site plan, the fire coordinator and a representative from the Rockerville Fire Department meet with the applicant to review the construction plans and make recommendations for fire safety. So, that would be a, a third condition that staff would recommend be included if this variance is approved. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant and his contractor are both here as well today. He's provided a, a model of the Independence Hall building in Philadelphia.
Um, Lizanne?
Mm-hmm.
There was some mention of traffic issues in and out and so on.
Yes.
Is there any other further information on that?
There is, and I meant to touch on that. I apologize. The DOT had responded with some comments on the request stating that they would like some turn lanes installed and they would like to speak with the applicant about his expected visitation. The applicant has been in touch with Dan Staton over at DOT. It will require approval from DOT for the access before they're able to get a building permit from our department. I did speak with Dan Staton yesterday and he has now visited with Mr. Perdue and since the visitation is less than what I think the DOT thought it was going to be, they maybe won't be quite as stringent as the comments that were provided here. They're still looking at a downward ta, turn lane, meaning as you're heading north into town, coming down that hill from Bear Country, they're, they are looking at maybe asking for a left turn lane to be installed there. But the applicant will be required to work with the DOT and meet their requirements before we would issue a building permit out there. And I did just note in my staff report, these are obviously very important issues, but they're not particularly relevant to the height of the structure. It's just whether or not there would be a use there that's thirty-five feet tall or a hundred and twenty-six feet tall. The applicant is going to have to meet the DOT requirements and get approval for the access before we would issue a building permit on the property. And that has been included as a recommended, recommended condition of approval, number I know there was a comment too, that one of the two existing approaches may be closed when I talked to Dan yesterday, Staton from the DOT. He, he actually thought they may allow both to remain. It's actually better for a traffic pattern to have sort of a one-way-in, one-way-out situation. So, he thought for now they would probably leave the two approaches at this time and then after it's built and they get a better idea of visitation and things, there may be some additional requirements on down the road. When the DOT does approve a permit, it's conditional, so they can require changes and things to the traffic pattern, is my understanding.
So, one more question about the, so really, oh, Dan, you are still there. So, really, Danny, Rockerville Fire Department would not be the ones who respond to a fire? It'd be Rapid City Fire Department?
Rockerville Fire Department is the primary department. They have automatic mutual aid with Whispering Pines, Rapid City and Rapid Valley, I believe, for that area. So, all four fire departments would respond.
But Rapid City would really be the one who could, do they have equipment that?
Station six, which is at South Sixteen is the closest. But we just wanted to sit down and make sure we understood what the proposed use of the building was. Was it office building, motel, hotel? We weren't real sure. And then that a hundred and twenty-six feet, I mean, was that going to be occupied at some, in some fashion? And, and after the meeting with Mr. Perdue and Mr. Myers, no, that's just, it's a facade.
So, no, you'll be able to pull up on the.
So.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Lizanne, I have a question. The variance is a height variance.
Correct.
And the other things you've been talking about, like the traffic and so on, are apart from the variance and it's just a normal building permit process?
Correct.
So, so we don't have to worry at this moment about DOT and all that other stuff?
Correct.
And since the fire department has become comfortable, at least with the relationships of the height to this question, is there anything else we need to think about?
Not that I've identified, you know, with the interdepartmental review, the main concerns were traffic and fire suppression. The property is zoned highway service district, which does allow for tourist-oriented commercial uses in that area. If someone wanted to come in and build a gift shop that was only thirty-five feet tall or less, they would be able to do that with the building permit. Similarly, they would have to get approval from the DOT before we would issue the building permit. But I haven't identified any other concerns with, with the variance requests.
Okay. So, the question is, do we or do we not grant a variance on the hundred feet deal, whatever the footage is?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to say that Mr. Perdue has done a fantastic job of putting things together for Pennington County and others around the country. And he and his group did an absolutely fabulous job doing the City of Presidents. As you see downtown and you drive by and you walk by and you see the amount of people partaking in the City of Presidents, which is absolutely astounding. And I think this will be the same way. I think it's a good thing to happen. It sits there on that hillside, so you've got a high hill up behind it, so it's not going to look here as tall as it really is. I believe it, I'll go.
And this is just kind of a view. I went across South Highway sixteen onto Neck Yoke and took a picture here of the property. So, I'll walk over here and point out a few things. So, the property does begin down here. These off-premise billboards are on the property. The structure itself would be here, you know, going up, but there is a high hill line behind there, trees, so I don't know that it would stick out like a sore thumb, so to speak.
Yes. On the west side of the highway.
Any further discussion?
Now that you said that, I'll make a motion to approve the height variance for this variance and that is, just to bring up the last on thirteen oh eight?
Yes, correct.
Do we have a second?
With three conditions?
I, I don't think we can put conditions on a variance and I think that comes under the building permit.
We actually can condition a variance.
Hmm?
We can condition a variance, actually.
And they've recommended three of them?
Yeah.
The staff did.
And they're mainly just things to address.
So, if we, if we agree to this today with the variances on there, or the, the suggestions on there, we're not going to go through this again down the road when you buy the building permit.
Correct.
Okay. I would include those three recommendations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Don, are you familiar with the, the conditions that are attached to this?
Yeah, I am.
And you're comfortable with that?
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Okay. Any, any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to come out of Board of Adjustment.
Second. Moved and seconded to adjourn the Board of Adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Next item is the planning and zoning consent calendar.
And do I typically read the items on the consent agenda? Yes. Holly's looking at me, yes, already. Thanks. I know we do at Planning Commission, but I wasn't sure here. So, we have four items on the consent agenda today. The first item B is a second reading of rezone thirteen oh six by Doug Sletton. This is to rezone two acres from limited agriculture district to suburban residential district. The Board of Commissioners approved the first reading of this rezone on June sixth, twenty thirteen. The second item, item C, is a first reading and public hearing of rezone thirteen ten, the applicant being U. Lazy Two LLC or Robert Schmitz. The agent is fiscal land surveying. This is to rezone ten point two-nine acres from general agricultural district to limited agricultural district. Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezone to rezone the ten point two-nine acres from general ag to limited ag at their last meeting. The third item D is a comprehensive plan amendment, CA thirteen oh four. The applicant is Jarvis and Frances Olson. Fiscal land surveying is the agent. This is to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to low-density residential. Planning Commission recommended approval of this comprehensive plan amendment at their last meeting. And the final item E is a vacation of easement request thirteen oh one by Jerry and Michelle Sowards. This is to vacate a portion of the access easements located along the interior of lots thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, and eighteen of tract A of Sunnyside Acres. Planning Commission recommended to postpone this vacation of easement request in order for the applicant to work with neighboring landowners. Those are the four items on the consent agenda.
Does anyone wish to remove any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended, or as presented, rather. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Items from the chair is next and I will call on Commissioner Buscarood to report on the TIF meeting this morning.
That's interesting.
Well.
That's good enough. That says it all.
Commissioner Buscarood is a little loudmouth this morning at the TIF meeting.
Early in the morning, huh?
Yeah. Must've got out of bed and he must've got out of bed the wrong night. Luckily, Mr. Peterson was there and succinctly stated the county's position, uh, which the city really doesn't agree with. I guess we will move ahead, although they are, they said they would look, take a look at their guidelines and there is some discussion about changing some of them, mainly whether it should move toward redevelopment, which was what TIFs were for in the first place, to, away from what they call greenfield development, which is, let's just go anywhere we want to out in the country, give them a TIF and let them build whatever they want. And there was, might be some movement away from that, although that's, that's where construction is now and that's where the, they call it growth. It's not, Lindell pointed out, not really growth, it is expansion. But I, I don't know, we're still outnumbered on that committee and there's not much hope of changing it. But the city attorney did say they were going to work on some other kinds of, uh, means to, to finance improvements within the city and take it to the legislature and try to get away from TIFs. So, we will see if they come up with any, we, we would be in favor of them, but it's their only means right now to, to encourage business and economic, under the guise of economic development, they're using TIFs and that's, that was never the purpose of them, I don't think. Anyway, it was, it was, oh, not a bad meeting, I guess. There might be some progress made. I wouldn't hold my breath.
Well, I appreciated your presence. Committee reports.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I could give you just a quick update. I, uh, numerous, numerous changes at the base going on right now, numerous people, they're leaving, new ones coming in. A couple of guys that's got thirty, thirty-five years in the Air Force and an O-six ranking are retired. And with my project that I mentioned earlier in the day, today, up in Lead, the, I talked to General Wright, he sent the seven National Guard troops up to help us out in that cemetery. They did a fab, fabulous job. They dug the holes for the flagpole and put the forms in and poured the cement and we've got the flagpole up and things progressing for, progressing for Saturday's completion. And I had one individual told me, he said, "You know, he's reading his deals with the, that keeps popping up in the paper from George Farby about the pigs." And somebody said, "Well, why don't you just put out an APB?" And I said, "No, points bulletin." And he said, "No, all pigs bulletin." And so, that's where that is and that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Nothing further. We need a motion for executive session.
So, move.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay.
Moved by Troutman, seconded by Davis to come out of executive session. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have another motion?
Um, Mr. Chair, I'd move to enter into an MOU agreement with the Community Health, uh, I think I just, it's Black Hills Community Health Services, to pursue planning of a possible joint building project with Health and Human Services and Community Health and that we would, as a county, be responsible for a third of this initial planning process and which would be a third of twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm sure you can clean that up, Holly.
Would, would the motion be to authorize the chair's signature on the MOU?
Yes.
That, that included that?
Okay.
Your second?
Second.
Everyone understand the motion?
The lengthy one.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next.
Motion to adjourn.
There a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.